... [1023.88]
We're probably pretty happy here.
So we got to rub it in that we hung out with Maggie Johnson.
Oh.
But we do have people in the office, younger people, and they use them all the time.
Yeah, well, that's what they get.
Rub it in a little bit.
Exactly.
Okay, I think we're a lot of them.
Well, I think we're about there. Are we good to go?
Thumbs up.
All right, well, let's call this June 27th meeting of the Allen County Public Library Board of Trustees to start. It is 3:00 PM, and Madam Secretary, if you would be willing to do the roll call, we'd appreciate that.
I would appreciate doing that, thank you. Mr. Eisbart? Mr. Moss?
Present.
Mr. Curley?
Present.
Mr. Pastorek?
Present.
Mr. Seifert?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Present.
And Ms. Shaminoff, present. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven present and one absentee.
We have our quorum. Thank you. We also have under item number two, an adoption of the agenda. I would take a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against, the same. That is approved. And so we've got number, item number three, which is approval of the minutes. I'd be happy to entertain a motion for A, B, and C, minutes of the regular session, Capitol Project Committee, and minutes of approval of the claims. Or do you want to do that separately?
No, yeah, we can do them.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. That has been approved. So on to number four, our financial report for May of 2024.
All right, thank you, Paul. In your packet are your financial reports, and happy to report they're, all the lines other than had been reported earlier last month are staying within their benchmark area, the spending's staying fine. Of course, the one that's really accelerated is the building repairs and maintenance, as you'll see from the afternoon, claims were, we have claims of around 1.6 million, and it's with the roof, the main roof and chiller projects. So we'll have those for a few months now, but nothing else to report on those. As far as news and notes, the, about 30 minutes ago, I successfully uploaded and have submitted our annual comprehensive financial report to GFoa for its award consideration. So the audit has been completed, all done. Thanks again to Jim, who sat in for the exit conference this past Monday for, with the auditors. Again, we received a unqualified opinion, which in accounting speak is good. So everything went well with the audit, and everything, you know, was, they had no findings. They had three recommended entries that we will make during '24 for the financial statements ending '24, but other than that, everything went well with that. Again, the other news, of course, now we start the budget process, and we've had some meetings already. DLGF and the State Board of Accounts put their workshop on at the end of May, gave some guidelines there, and then we'll start now getting a lot of the state information, whether it be for income tax, excise, you know, property tax growth, et cetera. Of course, '25s is limited by the legislation that was passed last year. We'll be limited, again, to a 4% growth on our, you know, property tax levy, and that will also, again, be the amount that we have to keep under in order to not have a binding review, and this would be by the city if we had to do that. So budget will be in full swing. I did put in your packet the budget calendar for this year. I have some of the key dates there. Just, you know, we'll be running the same as last year with the public hearing scheduled for the September board meeting and the actual adoption and passage of the budget in the October meeting. Susan and I will, and Jill, for that matter, will be meeting with the Department of Local Government Finance on August 27th, that's a Tuesday. That will be where they review all of our numbers, all of our forms, and make sure they, we've got everything correct before we submit it for publication, which in that case is the posting on the gateway system for the legal notices. Other than that, not a lot else on the financial side, just an update on the roof, knock on wood, everything is going well with that. Even with the hot weather we receive, we had last week, the guys were able to do work. They started in the southwest corner, which is, you know, around Business Science Technology, that end of it, and they're working their way around. The one thing that we have discovered is that we want to make some modifications to the drains. The drains up there were put in with a different kind of configuration. It was signed off back in 2005 as okay, but Jake, you know, really wants to make sure that there isn't leakage happening. We ended up having leakage up there during one of the rainstorms when the roof had been replaced, so he's very sensitive to that, especially when you start getting into the genealogy section. So they're going to reconfigure some drains. They've been able to retrofit them for a relatively low cost, so I think we're going to go ahead with that and make sure that we don't run any risk of water entering our building and doing any damage at all. But other than that, the roofing is going well. Of course, the next step would be the solar panels and the chiller work, that will come next, and, you know, I think that's about all I have to report on that at this point. But I'm glad to entertain any questions.
Dave, what is, can you remind us again, what is the projected timeline for the roof? And basically for the project?
Well, the roof would probably be by September. In fact, you know, it might be before that if they continue to have some decent weather and all. Solar would be around August, September. They're, they're going to install the solar as the roof is being done.
Okay.
I know we are planning, and I think Susan might mention it, but I'm not sure, in your report, that there's many individuals wanting tours of that solar work that's going on. They're interested in seeing it, so I think we're trying to set those up for September.
Correct.
Yeah, and then...
And you'll be invited.
Yep. So, and then anything related with the roof and the solar will be completed by September at the latest, and then the chiller work will be completed by November. We need to have this all completed by the end of the year, well before the end of the year, because again, we're going to be submitting this for the Inflation Reduction Act reimbursements for this project, and we need to, so one of the things was to have that project completed by the end of the year so that can be filed, you're basically filing it with a tax return for the 2024 tax year. So, yep, right now, everything looks like it's on target for completing it well before the end of the year.
David?
Yeah.
Because we're anticipating some tours, do you have a sense what the scale of this would be? And my reason for asking is, are we considering putting down any kind of traffic pads or something to make sure that we're not wearing on the actual roof surface if we anticipate this is something, we could have dozens or, I don't know, hundreds of people?
You know, Pat, I'd have to defer to, to, you know, Jake on that. I'm sure, I mean, they're walking all the time up there now with, I think that, that mat, the membrane that's being put up there is pretty durable. You know, but I will check with them.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Good question, thank you.
It is, because, you know, the last thing we want is wearing a traffic pattern that suddenly now is getting worn out before the rest of the roof.
Any other questions for Dave? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report for May of 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. That has been approved. You have claims as well.
Yes, today's, yep, today's claims, as I mentioned, this is a large claim register, 1.6 million, of which 1.4 of it is tied to the roofing project. We've got almost $800,000 for the roofing supplies and things, $350,000 for the cooling tower activity, and some of the other HVAC, the last part of the Shawnee HVAC work that was being done, and then $250,000 is for the labor part of the roof. So we have the materials and then the labor part from Fort Wayne Roofing. So those are the large claims today, and that, I mean, $254,000 is the third one. The next one is $78,000 for the system-wide electrical. So, you know, normally, that would be the largest claim, so you're going to hear that repetition from me for about the next three months, four months.
Any additional questions on the claims? I'd entertain a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll bring these around for signature.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. They have been approved. So we are on to number six, and I'm going to defer to you to do the introduction.
Thank you, and I will defer, if I may, to Lorraine to introduce our new social services coordinator.
I'll actually ask, Cass, if you don't mind going up to the podium. Cass started with us a week and a half ago as our new social services coordinator, which you all may remember that we've had social work interns for the last two years and have added staff as a full-time staff member on our, on our team. Cass is going to tell you a little bit about himself.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. So again, my name is Cass Winters. I'm going to go over first kind of what my educational history is, just so that you guys are aware of that. I have my Associate of Science and Human Services. I received that from Ivy Tech Community College, and when I graduated from Ivy Tech, I also graduated as the outstanding student of the department. I have my Bachelor's of Science, that is in sociology, not social work. My minor was in social work. I graduated in 2015 from Ball State University. I was graduating as magna cum laude from that. I have my Master's of Social Work from IU School of Social Work. That was in 2019, and I graduated with a 4.0. My social work history, I've worked with HIV populations, students, elderly, homeless individuals, women, children, severely mentally ill, substance users, and many other marginalized populations. I have case management experience with all of those populations. I have helped in creation of agency policies, and that is with multiple different agencies. I have done ongoing counseling, this would be therapy, for numerous years, usually focused in on the most severe cases. I have heavy research skills, that's partially because of that degree in sociology, but I have done researching into government regulations for agencies, which was mainly to move them towards ethical standards and transparency. I am currently licensed as an LCSW, which stands for Licensed Clinical Social Worker. I have held that licensure for two years. Before that, I had LSW, which is Licensed Social Worker. Before that, I've been in the field for 20-plus years. Personal history, I've lived only in Fort Wayne for about two years, so some of this is still new to me. I came from the Muncie, Indiana, community. I lived in San Francisco for a while, that was roughly six years. I'm originally from Winchester, Indiana, so I'm familiar with Indiana. I used to do book blogging, which, if you know what that is, you review books, you get sent advance copies, and I basically, my philosophy about libraries, I review, like, I see them as safe haven places, places that have provided people places to go sometimes in their worst scenarios. I will also say, I did recently the Strength Finders. My number one was belief, which this means I have, I really stick tight to, like, core belief systems, but what I found out is that this can actually make me be perceived as negative. But this is because I'm someone who focuses in on identification of problems, I focus in on trying to get to solutions. So that is a core part of who I am. I am a no-nonsense individual, I want to get things accomplished. I am fine with bureaucracy timelines, but I want to know that I'm working on something. I also believe that every person I have interacted with in this week and a half, we're all here for the same purpose, which is for patrons. So this should be what governs every aspect of my job going forward. I also want to say, all human beings are deserving of help, so this is something that guides me. This is from, like, the loud people, the people who are homeless, those that maybe don't smell the best, the ones that kind of can't speak for themselves, the ones with criminal histories. Social workers should be here for all of that. Kind of the last thing that I want to go into is, if I'm an LCSW, why would I pick the library? It's because I had no hesitation, first off. The moment that I saw this come across, indeed, applied. I, I actually turned down several offers to work with ACPL. The reason is, is because I mentioned earlier that libraries are safe havens to me, because they were for me. I'm very transparent with this. In 2000, when I was in San Francisco, I was actually homeless myself, and during that time period, social workers and libraries did not exist. And I understand, from a very fundamental human aspect, I would not have been as homeless for as long if this had existed. So I'm coming from a very authentic place in this position. It's very much in alignment with my own core values because of where I have been in my own life. So you're getting someone in this position who is going to have that lived experience that you can't necessarily get from just having a licensure. And also, this is kind of my forever dream job, like, I'm probably going to be here for a minute. And so I kind of also wanted to be polite and, like, leave the floor open. Have you guys had any questions for me?
We had, I think, Pat, it was you that brought this up when we were talking about this position, how are they going to, and you probably haven't figured this out yet, but how are they going to, how are you going to divide your time amongst the different facilities? I mean, you're going to be spread pretty thin.
So I've thought about, because we are trying to work on getting interns, and so it's potentially that the interns might actually be going over more to the branch work, or it might be vice versa. There are more here at Maine, and I'm going to the branches, but we're also trying to figure out, I am the social worker for 350 staff members, thousands of patrons in 14 branches. We're still trying to figure out, hey, where is going to be the best utilization of my time? But we are making sure in all the processing that we're keeping all of those components in it. We're thinking about, I need to be available sometimes for staff, I need to be available for patrons. It has to be both, or this isn't going to be successful.
Well, look forward to hearing more about that. Is there, are there any other questions? Nope. Well, again, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looks like you made a good hire.
And did you catch the IU?
Yeah, yeah, I was never a 4.0 there. Have to confess that. Okay, on to number seven, presentation on Maker Labs and programming. Turn it over to you again.
Absolutely, thank you so much. So I also could have titled this Maker Labs, Past, Present, and Future. We are, as of this month, at our 10-year anniversary of the Maker Lab at Maine, and we have come so far, and there is so much yet to look forward to. So I asked Beth, Aja, and Kim to give sort of a nod to our history and where we're going in the future, so take it away, Beth.
Hi, everybody. Thanks to Cass, he's my next-door neighbor, we're office mates, and I, it's been amazing these last couple weeks to get to know him, I'm really excited. So I'm very excited to share where we are with Maker Labs. I want to just point out, Maker Labs around here are very much collaborative, so I am speaking right now, but I'm speaking on behalf also of Aja and Kim, and they are here and available as questions come up, which there may be. So 10 years now of Maker Labs, starting with the Maker Lab that opened in the summer, June 2014, so truly 10 years ago this month. You are probably aware, but we have 3D printing, media transfer stations, a small recording studio, those have been there the whole time, and staff by maker guides that we hired specifically for that role, as well as our access Fort Wayne colleagues. And of course, they are experts in audiovisual content, so there's really, like, a special kind of making skill that goes into that. Our Maker Lab has really become a hub for STEM programming at the library, so sewing, coding, video editing, intro to robotics, those kinds of programs. Typically, they've been very small workshops here at Maine, because our Maker Lab is relatively small, it's got lots of cool equipment, but it class sizes of five, maybe 10 if we're really cramming everybody in there. But we've also had open lab time, so people can come in, have knowledgeable staff support as they work on their own projects. You bring in interest, our team will provide that one-on-one support to learn and utilize the equipment that we offer in our maker spaces. And lately, one of our popular programs has been called Print and Paint. This is often youth that come to this, although we might have an adult one, I can't really remember at the moment, but people will do 3D printing and create little figurines, like, to use in Dungeons and Dragons or other hobby things, and then paint those up. Of course, that sounds like a pretty fun casual hobby thing, but also, we are teaching computer-aided design in that process. We are teaching 3D printing, and we're teaching material science, because not just every paint will stick to those. Anyway, it's really, really a great way to promote STEM learning across the board and in fun ways. So over the years, we've had a lot of growth. had a lot of growth. When the Maine Maker Lab opened, we had the 3D printing, recording booth, media transfer, and 900 patrons that we served in those first six months for the first half year it was open. The next year, we opened our Maker Lab in Georgetown, and over the years, we've added electric cutting, so like Cricket or Silhouette is what you've probably heard of, laser engraving. We've had established regular programming and outreach with all of our maker type of offerings. It's also become an entrepreneurship hub. We're well-known in the community as a place that people can come and work on prototypes, work on whatever their side hustle is. Just two days ago, I was talking with somebody who's kind of a mover and shaker in the city, but they have a side hustle, and they're, they've just worked on prototypes here in the last few weeks, which is very exciting. So 2024, here we are now. From 900 patrons, the first six months, we're over 1,000 almost every month here at the Maine Maker Lab alone. We are planning a relocation project to give that Maker Lab more space. We'll talk about that in a minute. And we're also having strategic growth across the system. Many of you are aware, we've opened some new mini labs, and I'll share about those in a moment. And we have growing partnerships, which I'll also speak to. So you have all approved our strategic plan. We're grateful for that. It, making and Maker Lab-type stuff is all over the strategic plan. Equitable access, expanded education-related programs and infrastructure, including connected learning, that's been a big focus for the Maker Labs. We're supporting workforce development, small businesses, entrepreneurs, planning programs that are centered on community voices and community talents, as well as community needs. Not just doing this for fun, although it is very, very fun, but because there's also a need there. And expanding the Maker Lab here at Maine is part of the strategic plan. So we have officially rolled out our brand-new Maker Labs at our branches. So Pontiac, Shawnee, Hessen Castle, and Georgetown all have Maker Labs. SA Labs, Shawnee, and Hessen Castle, they're big carts, but they still have really cool stuff on them. So we have 3D printing, electric cutting, heat presses, sewing machines, support for things like button making and lamination. And starting just a few weeks ago, we added not just the programs, but we've added those open hours a few times a month, when we have staff available, who you bring your project in, our team will help you get set up, use those machines and equipment, and make the thing that you have in mind to make, whatever that might be. Despite this expanded capacity and hugely expanded number of programs we're offering across the whole system, so far, all of those programs are very close to all, have had wait lists. We are, the demand is very, very high. And we've been doing surveys for these Maker Labs because it was generously funded by an ARPA grant from the city. So we're trying to track some impact, and we know that we're reaching people who wouldn't or don't typically come to the Maine Library. So we are reaching more people with these services. We opened our first sort of open hours and programs using this ARPA-funded, ARPA-grant-funded equipment back in September, and so far, we estimate that 2,210 people have been served by programs and open hours related to this equipment funded by this grant. We're also getting feedback through those surveys, and almost all of the respondents have identified those aspects of connected learning as part of their Maker Lab experience. So that was our goal, and we're reaching our goal, and I'm really proud of that. A few pictures. We've got our heat presses going. We do know that we've had, like, students from Amp Lab who use heat presses and start small businesses, like, as high schoolers. Amp Lab closes, they can come to us now. Last summer, they didn't have anywhere to go, but now they can come to us. We have heat presses. In the middle, we've got some Ozobots, some early coding activities happening with kiddos. And our very first virtual reality program that was open to the public, that's a shot from that one, from a few months ago. So here at the Maine Library, we're planning relocation. We're moving to a larger footprint, fondly called around here still, yet, the Duncan Space. But we are looking forward to shifting our Maker Lab into that much larger footprint. We have plans, tend to have the space zoned for different kinds of making, different kinds of equipment and projects, seating for much larger workshops. It should be two or three times the number of people should be able to attend those when we're in our new space. We'll have enhanced audiovisual production support, and that includes a brand-new four-person podcasting studio that's going to be inside that space. Very excited about that. We're getting a lot of inquiries from the public wanting help making podcasts. And now that we're also doing our own podcasts, we've learned it, our staff has learned, so now we can teach the public too. We have new 3D scanners, the virtual reality stuff funded by the ARPA grant, and we're building in infrastructure to support future growth. Right now, we know from our partners, the NIC, some of our other local partners, some schools, that there are some gaps. There are things right now where people want to learn, want to try new things, want to learn the basics of some of the STEM kind of work or prototyping. There are places that you just can't do that here in town. And it's really, really special that the library can provide those things. So as we get funding for new and updated equipment, we will be ready in this new space. The project timeline, we're actually, along the way, we're in the process right now of reviewing quotes and sort of figuring out those project details, furniture selection, that kind of thing. Kim knows all about it and will be happy to answer your specific questions. We're estimating that construction will start in August, if all continues to go well, with early 2025 being our target for a grand opening. So our roadmap for the future, I've also been working on some other grants. If we open as planned, we'll be using our existing maker equipment in our new space, but we have put together a grant with the Don Wood Foundation, and that's under review right now. We're hoping to be able to fund equipment updates, to have our equipment match across the system, be high-quality, show the public what it is to work with really good equipment, not just 10-year-old equipment. We are, have also asked for some funding to help us with a landscape analysis. Kirsten Glass is our system-wide maker specialist. She and I have been working together on figuring out who are all the partners that we should be talking to and working with. What does the landscape in Fort Wayne look like? How does that compare to what other libraries are doing? And what, how does that compare to, like, what the big libraries are doing? And can we learn from them so that as we move forward, as we continue expansion, we make sure we're learning from them, implementing things well, instead of maybe making mistakes? We want to learn from them. That analysis will inform strategic growth. It may look like a recommendation from us to build more of these mini labs, so that each of our neighborhood branches can offer the same amazing experience. It might, though, look like something different. It might look like specialized labs, where maybe over here is where you go if you have, like, a big sewing project, and over here is where you go if you really want to do laser cutting. I don't know. Some, some branches or some libraries do it that way. There's also a possibility of, like, a giant bus. Like, we've seen that, we've seen that, and there's ones that we can learn about, too. And those could go to different branches, but also maybe go out into the community a little bit more. That would be really exciting. Either way, we're going to make sure that that's really backed up by the research and data we're doing. So we're not going to come back with a recommendation that's just kind of coming from nowhere. We're really grateful for your support. All of this progress that's happened is become, because the board has supported us all along the way. It's your vision and your strategy that we're hoping is showing here, and we're grateful. If you have questions about any of this, though, I'd be very happy to answer them, or Aja or Kim can also chime in.
Any, any questions? Appreciate that report.
I did have some. Just generally, what is the budget for this, and how much is being supported by some of these grants you were mentioning?
So the budget, I'm not sure I can split out what our maker budget is, because we have some of the maker budget that has fallen under Access Fort Wayne lines, some of it has fallen under programming lines. Staff comes from staffing lines from public services as well as Access Fort Wayne. So we've been working on that to figure out what are the actual costs. But the grant funding has all been for very specific things. So the Don Wood Foundation funding would be for operational equipment. It's not funding programmatic pieces, although we did write into the grant, we'd like to start offering maker kits, which would be, you walk in, you can borrow a kit, do a project there that's already ready for you without a staff person having to walk you through as part of a big group. That's been done very, very successfully in Fishers, Indiana, in an incredibly glorious maker space that was designed by our very own Kim Bolin. So we know it works really well, and we have toured there to see how it works. So there are a few programmatic things in the grants, but for the most part, the supplies and staffing are coming out of our general budget funds, and then we're using grants and other opportunities like that for refreshing, renewing bigger things.
I will chime in. The grant we received from the city, the ARPA grant, that was for about $31,000.
That's right.
Okay. I had a comment. I, I'm really glad to hear that you're thinking strategically about how do we move this into the branches. I want to encourage that.
Absolutely.
Second thing is, so what are we going to use the old maker space for?
Ah, that's a fantastic question. We've been doing all kinds of brainstorming, and I don't think that we're ready with an answer for you, but I'll let Susan or my team speak to that.
I don't think we have an answer yet. We did do a staff survey to get input about what they thought could be a good future use of the space, and we are still taking all of that in.
There's lots of opportunities.
Sure.
And some are for public use, and some are for staff use. So we got both kinds of suggestions. So stay tuned on that.
Okay. Any other questions for Beth? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right along to agenda item number eight, the Executive Director's Report.
Thank you. There is a written report in your packet. I'll give some highlights from that, as well as some late-breaking things that didn't make your packet. The Audio Reading Service held its annual volunteer recognition luncheon this Tuesday at Miro Center. Thank you, Mr. Williams, for attending. We were glad to have you there. We had over 100 people in attendance. And during that luncheon, it was announced that the Audio Reading Service won two first-place awards from the International Association of Audio Information Services for two of their productions. One was the Able Living Show, and the other is the Grocery Ads promo. And in a surprise to our Audio Reading Service manager, George Johnson Coffey, at the luncheon, we had a special appearance from State Representative Phil Giaquinta, and he bestowed upon George the Circle of Corident Honor. And that is an honor for remarkable contributions to the betterment of Indiana and its people. And George was truly surprised by that. We pulled one off. This is her 10th year in the role, and she does plan on retiring at the end of the year. She has made that public, so we wanted to take an opportunity to honor her and her tremendous work. Outreach season is in full gear at ACPL. The summer months are where we are out and about in all the various fairs and festivals. Just this month alone, we were at Arab Fest, we were at Juneteenth Freedom Fest, and we were at German Fest. You can see that Kurt Witcher provided a report from German Fest, where our genealogy team truly takes genealogy out in the field and in the wild and on the spot. And in the midst of German Fest, they answered 839 questions. So have genealogy, we'll travel. Also, Kurt shared an email that this department received from a patron, and I just was so touched by it that I included it in your report, and I'll share it. It starts out with, "Hi, I don't know if this is weird," which lets me interject, it's not. Nothing's weird. We're used to weird, and it's not weird. "But I'm so excited. I just wanted to update you. With the information you guys gave me, I was reunited with my entire biological family. I seriously cannot thank you guys enough. I found all of my siblings and my mother. I'm not working, I'm now working," excuse me, that was a typo, "I'm now working on getting in touch with my father. My life isn't a mystery anymore. I just thought you should know how much your research means to me." So what a testament to the kind of work we do here. Sometimes people are coming in to get the new James Patterson book. Sometimes people are getting connected to resources so they can find a home, and sometimes we are literally reuniting families. So a pretty amazing place to be. On the topic of other roles we play in the community, we were approached by Mayor Sharon Tucker's office and asked if the Maine Library could be designated as an official cooling station during each day that reaches 90 degrees. And of course, we said yes. And unofficially, all of our libraries serve as cooling stations and as warming stations in the winter. Being a cooling station doesn't really mean anything different for us. We're open the same amount of hours, but the city just wanted to make sure to highlight the availability of our building during this particular heat wave. So we were very, very happy to partner with the city on that. You may have seen in the news that the Library Foundation has begun fundraising for the Imagination Library to bring that program to Allen County, and we're off to a really great start. As of yesterday, we have raised just over $10,000. We have a $100,000 goal in order to get the program started. And $1,000 of that came for the Monroeville American Legion Auxiliaries. We want to thank them for that generous donation. Our summer learning sign-ups are going very, very well. As of this week, we have over 14,000 people of all ages signed up to participate in Summer Spark. I wanted to share as well that our Juneteenth lecture last week, the Roland Center lecture, we had over 100 people in attendance in person, and then we had several others watch online. And also, you may have seen outside the Roland Center, our donor wall is now officially installed and complete, and it looks beautiful. So I encourage you to check it out. And finally, last week, it was a busy week in events last week. We hosted on Thursday in partnership with Catholic Charities World Refugee Day. We had the CEO of Catholic Charities here, as well as the bishop, I believe. We had about 150 refugees and community members here enjoying food, stories, and activities. And we had two former refugees from the Ukraine and Afghanistan who shared their personal stories, and they were quite moving. And that is my written report. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Susan?
No.
All right. Well, moving along to number nine on the agenda here. Any new business to come before the board? I didn't see any committee reports. I'm assuming, talked about that at another time. No new business. All right. Any public comment? Are we, do we have anything online? Any questions? Or, oh, that's easy. I guess we're down to number 11. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. We are adjourned. We do have an executive session shortly after. We'll take a little break and then get that going.
Thank you.
Nice. Just been out west.
He's in here.
On a river cruise, really?
With Bob and Irem Walters.
Oh, really?
Yeah.